Welcome to Murfreesboro City Council. It's May 22. Councilmember Austin Maxwell has our prayer and our pledge.
Bow with me. Our heavenly Father, we thank you for this time together. Please help us, the Lord, to make the best decisions for all the citizens of Murfreesboro. Please be with us in the coming days and weeks, and please watch over us all. For in your name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Item one through eight. Excuse me, do we have any one that's on the public comment that signed up?
No, sir.
All right. On the consent agenda, we have items one through eight.
Move.
Second.
Motion is second.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gills Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Ms. Meyer Shacklett?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we have old business, item nine, ordinance 25016, modifying city court fees. This is second and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gills Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Ms. Meyer Shacklett?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, let's move to new business. Item 10, land use matters. We have amending the PID zoning for property along Joby Jackson Parkway.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. We have one public hearing tonight. It is for an amendment to the Parkway Place PID, which stands for Planned Industrial District. I know all of you are familiar with Parkway Place. It's been a thriving, successful industrial development down on the south side of Joby Jackson Parkway. The largest building of which is the Oshkosh McNeilus facility located there along Logistics Way. So as with any large-scale planned development, oftentimes there are needs to, for the developer to step back and review some of the details in the pattern book and to make sure that it aligns with current market conditions and current tenant and buyer needs. So we have before you today is an amendment to the pattern book, to the planned development zoning. The main components of this amendment are modernizing the use table in the pattern book to align with our current, with the current terms that we use in the zoning ordinance, and also adding a couple of uses that were not in there previously. Notably, medium and heavy-duty automotive repair, as well as powder coating indoor only. Also, the amendment modifies some of the boundary lines between the quote-unquote "regions" within the development. At any rate, we did hold a public hearing on this PID amendment at the Planning Commission on April the 9th, and the Planning Commission voted to recommend approval of this request to you. And so we'll need to hold a public hearing on this matter and then consider it on first reading. I'll be happy to answer any questions. The applicant doesn't have a formal presentation, but if you have any questions for them, Mr. Rob Mulchen and Brian Grover with SEC are here as our members or representatives of Swanson Development, the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Pauling. All right, we'll hold a public hearing for this item. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, you can come to the podium. You'll have three minutes representing the individual, five minutes representing the homeowners association. If you'll keep all comments directed to the city council, we'll get those answered at the end of the public hearing. The public hearing is now open. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll consider on first reading ordinance 250Z15.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gills Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Ms. Meyer Shacklett?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you today. All right, let's move to ordinance 11, excuse me, we'll move to ordinance. We have fiscal year '26 budget public hearing and related ordinances.
Yes, we're presenting the FY '26 budget to y'all tonight for consideration. We first need to conduct a public hearing on the budget and tax rate. I'm available to answer any questions before or after the public hearing. And then after the hearing, council will consider first reading of the budget and tax rate ordinances as normal, and then we also have the additional ordinance to change the tax due date included here.
Okay. All right. We'll need to hold a public hearing on our adoption of our proposed fiscal year '26 budget. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll now consider on first reading ordinance 25009.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gills Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Ms. Meyer Shacklett?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to item C. This is first reading on ordinance 25010.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gills Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Ms. Meyer Shacklett?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to item C. This is first reading on ordinance 25010.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gills Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Ms. Meyer Shacklett?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to item 12, ordinance 25017. This is the fiscal year '26 water and sewer rate.
Good evening, members of council. I'll run through this real quick. You have seen this previously at the workshop. We are recommending increases proposed with last year's rate design, which was also based on our cost-of-service study for FY '23. All data and projections will be updated with a new cost-of-service this year to include an FY '30 pro forma. The rate increases are based on $120 million of upcoming debt, and we continue to use reserves where we can, but not go below our 12 months of operating expenses of $33 million. On this slide, the proposed water minimum monthly bill increase is, or meter size, is shown here in the top chart. Our projected revenue from this increase is in the amount, between existing customers and growth, is in the amount of $330,000. This is with a 25 cent increase for the majority of our accounts, and then our commodity charge is increasing by five cents. The sewer minimum monthly is also increasing on the 5/8 inch meter of 25 cents, and then you can see how it is reflected in the other meters. With this increase based on existing customers and growth, we will gain about $853,000. And then this is, this table represents those increases. The residential minimum monthly charge will go from $11 this year to $11.25 for FY '26. And you can also see the commodity charge for water goes from $3.70 to $3.75. On the sewer minimum monthly charge, it will increase 25 cents as well, but our commodity charge for sewer will remain the same. And then this last side just shows that this next year, FY '26, that the combined monthly residential water and sewer bill will be $71.01. And that's all I've got.
Any questions for Valerie? All right, we need to consider first reading on ordinance 25017.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gills Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Ms. Meyer Shacklett?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, let's move to item 13, sponsorship ordinance, 25001. Mr. Tindall?
Good evening, mayor and council. This is an ordinance proposed for the sponsorship ordinance to assist the Murfreesboro Sports Authority as it begins its marketing campaign for sponsorships for Parks and Recreation and the golf departments. It defines what type of ordinances would be allowed and to be displayed at the various parks and recreation facilities. So it's pretty straightforward. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Any questions for Mr. Tindall?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gills Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Ms. Meyer Shacklett?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, let's move to resolutions. You have resolution 25R22 to approve use of tax-exempt bonds for VUMC.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. This item is to consider a resolution relating to Vanderbilt Life Flight helicopter to be based at the Murfreesboro Airport. The Health and Education Facilities Board of Metro Nashville is prepared to issue tax-exempt revenue bonds and other tax-exempt debt, and to then loan the proceeds of the debt to Vanderbilt University Medical Center. Vanderbilt, in turn, intends to use a portion of the funds to purchase a life-flight helicopter to be based at the Murfreesboro Airport, and which will be used to provide acute care, emergency medical services within Murfreesboro. Under state law, the Health and Education Facilities Board may finance projects to be located outside of Nashville and Davidson County, but only after the financing is approved by a resolution adopted by the city council, which is the purpose of this resolution. It's important to note that the city council's approval of the debt issuance is solely to comply with state law and the Internal Revenue Code, and the resolution here in no way creates liability on the part of the city to pay any principal or interest on any debt issued by the board. There's a representative from Vanderbilt Medical Center here tonight, Mr. Dwight Seeling, to answer any questions from the council regarding the project, if there are any. Thank you.
Any questions?
Don't they already have a helicopter out there?
I think they're upgrading, right?
I believe so.
Yeah, there's, for those of us that are at the ballfield all the time, we see that helicopter take off routinely.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gills Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Ms. Meyer Shacklett?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we move to resolution 25R18, City Schools Fiscal Year '25 Budget Amendment.
We had, we were at four.
Oh, sorry, I accidentally crossed through that. Resolution 25R19, unclaimed property request. Sorry, Trey.
That's right.
Thank you, mayor and council. This resolution before you is to allow the city to request unclaimed property to be returned to the city, provided that the city, sorry, provides that the city takes on that liability for any future claims. To date, we have not had any claims against that.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gills Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Ms. Meyer Shacklett?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, now let's move to resolution 25R18, City Schools Fiscal Year '25 Budget Amendment number 10.
Good afternoon again. We have a budget amendment for you for our current FY '25 budget. On May 13th, the City School Board approved this budget amendment, recognizing $931,860 in new revenue. The amendment recognizes revenue that was not previously budgeted in FY '25, and comes from investments in our checking interest, additional TISA state funds, and the state-paid parental leave funds. There are revenues, along with inter-fund transfers, aligned with our general purpose expenditures to meet our final projections for FY '25, and we are recommending approval as presented.
Move for approval, Dr. Duke.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gills Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Ms. Meyer Shacklett?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you, Director Duke. All right, we'll move to approval on motion approval of the fiscal year '26 Murfreesboro Community Investment Trust charitable distributions.
Good evening, Mayor McFarland and council members. My name is Kevin Gentry, and I appreciate the opportunity to share with you a few comments regarding the community investment trust proceeds distributed to the charities in our community. The Committee on Contributions worked diligently to review applications and determine appropriate amounts for the grants. The efforts of the committee are greatly appreciated. A few points of note that I wanted to share with you all are, for fiscal year '26, the trust dispersed a total of $3,271,304, with $2,780,608 distributed to the city, and $490,696 to eligible local nonprofit and charitable organizations. Total amount distributed to grant recipients increased by 34% from FY '25. allocations to qualified beneficiaries are restricted by type of program, with the limitation of 20% for youth and educational services, 15% for community and victim services, and 10% for health-related services. No single organization can receive more than 25% of the amount distributed. The Board is pleased to share with the council that a total of 29 charitable organizations received grants during this round. The Board reviewed the committee's recommendations, assured the grants recipients were eligible, and disbursements complied with the requirements of the trust. Again, thank you for your time. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have for me.
Any questions, Mr. Gentry?
How many total applications did you have? You approved how many again?
I believe that number is 46.
46.
Well, 46 were submitted, 29.
Submitted 29.
Approved.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gills Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Ms. Meyer Shacklett?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, let's move to item 18, Fiscal Year '25 Annual Audit Contract.
Yes, we have the FY '25 audit contract for you to consider tonight. This is with our previous auditor, Joe Hastings and Associates, for audit services totaling $188,500, which also includes a required crosswalk reporting to the state of Tennessee, which is a fairly new requirement. These services have been budgeted in the Finance Department's FY '26 operating budget, and we recommend for approval. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gills Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Ms. Meyer Shacklett?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, let's move to item 19, Murfreesboro Transit Center Contingency Allowance Allocation, CCF 11. Shelley?
Good evening, mayor and members of the council. I'm here tonight to seek approval for Change Directive Number 11 for the use of contract contingency money allowance, and a time extension for the Murfreesboro Transit Facility project. The Change Directive includes addition of swing gate operators to maintain emergency operations compliance, pavilion canopies above transaction windows, and interior build-out of a shell room, additional fencing to increase site security, additional computer connections in the bus maintenance facility, and a 43-day time extension to perform this additional work. The approval of these additional items will be beneficial to staff and will enhance the daily operations of the facility. Council priority served constructing a transit facility will allow for continued improvements and expansion of transit services. The fiscal impact, the increased expense is $210,720,000. It is accommodated in the contingency allowance, with no change in the total contract amount of $17,845,843. I thank you for your time, and can answer any questions.
I'm sorry, can you explain that again? We, there's an additional expense, but it's not changing the total contract amount?
That is correct, yes.
What do you mean by that? We're paying it outside the contract?
We had contingency money and allowance set up in the contract, the original contract amount, so we're just asking for permission right now to spend more of that contingency that was already approved by council at the beginning of the project.
What was the total contingency? Do you remember?
The contingency allowance was around $750,000.
Yeah, we had a, Jamie, back several, back a year ago when we started this, if you remember, we had a long conversation about contingency.
Mm-hmm.
So what it was is that we're budget, typically the contingency is included in the contract.
Yes.
And so they have to come to us and ask to spend into that contingency.
Right, yes.
Correct. I guess, it's just a significant portion of that contingency. Just a lot of money. All good.
Yes. Would you like for me to break down what this $210,000 is? Would that help you out any, or?
Not particularly.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any questions? It's a good question, Jamie.
I mean, I just hope we don't have many more of these, because we're going to run out of that contingency money, and are we going to have to increase the contract price? Is my concern.
Right.
I think this.
The contract amount will not be increased at all, based on the approved budget from the beginning of this project. Actually, we'll probably be getting back at the end of this contract in August, we're looking at probably getting a $523,000 credit back to this project, which will be 3% under the total contract amount, if that helps seize anyone's questions.
Under budget, fantastic.
We'll be under budget. Yep.
Guess it's a bit positive? I don't know.
Yeah, the discussion we had was the way that we have to budget for the contingencies as part of the contract, as opposed to.
I do recall that conversation.
Every time you guys come, and we're doing individual change orders, so.
Yes.
It's confusing.
This allowed us to consolidate a lot of potential change orders to one change order and bring it back to council instead of coming back each month, so if that helps out.
I mean, Chris Griffiths is not even here, and we're talking about change orders.
I know, he said I'm taking his place now. He gave me the torch tonight, said I'm going to be.
We have a motion and a second.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gills Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Ms. Meyer Shacklett?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Can I ask who made those motions?
Motion.
Motion is second.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move to board and commission appointments. Council, you've got a recommendation on the pension committee. Many years ago, we added employee representation to the pension committee. It's gone through the police department, was our first employee rep, then it went to fire, and Kathy Smith, Melissa's, Wright served. I mean, so this is the new appointment. Alan Bozeman now will, is being recommended to serve, and that's a recommendation from city employees. I think he's filling the term of Kathy Smith and purchasing who served, so.
So move. Second.
Motion is second. And that was Sean and.
Thank you.
Her again. Just making sure.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gills Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Ms. Meyer Shacklett?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Any statements to be paid?
No, sir.
Any other business from our staff members? Any other business from our council members?
I want to compliment our Parks and Rec group for the work they're doing, and welcome all those people that have come in for spring playing. It's quite an awesome task that they perform every year. Is it 19, 19 years that we've done spring playing?
Yes, 2006. The contract is coming up, so it's almost 25 years.
Well, yeah, I think we've gotten some word about that, but I just, you know, didn't want to take this time to compliment them. They represent our city so well, and, you know, our police departments out there, you know, it's just a lot of good things happening to, we represent our city extremely well during this, and a lot of people have an opportunity to see what a special place our community is because of spring playing. And all those that work and make it happen, and all those that attend, and all those athletes, it's a really good event for our community.
I guess, let's give one more round of applause to the staff and all the department heads. I mean, they've been working on this budget since January, and to come in, no tax increase, and be able to give the significant public safety raises and everything else, I mean, it's tremendous.
Well done.
So thank you, well done.
Good work.
Staff is great.
Staff is great.
Did you say who? He said staff. I thought you said Stephanie.
Oh, staff.
She's staff.
I want to close out and just say, I was just reminded about 30 minutes ago that there are things that you look at, you see that you, we all have different opinions on different things. We agree on different things, we disagree on different things, but one of the things that gives us the ability to have those rights for agreeing and disagreeing is that we're going to be celebrating Memorial Day on Monday, and we won't see our residents, and so we can agree on lots of things in our community and disagree. But if it were not for the people who represented this flag and represented us to be able, as a community, to be here, and those loved ones who have lost family members representing and fighting for this country, none of us would have the ability to be here. And so I want to say thank you to a lot of our police officers and our fire department and our city employees who are former veterans. We have council members who are former veterans, and I want to say thank you for your service and for giving all of us the ability to be able to be here today. So the citizens of Murfreesboro, thank you for what you do, and when you see these veterans or these families who've lost loved ones, give them a hug and say thank you.
Shane, one more thing?
Yes, sir.
Especially Bill Allen.
That's right, yeah.
Especially Bill Allen.
So Bill Allen on Tuesday, I think it was Monday or Tuesday, got to go on behalf of the city council. Bill, for those of y'all who don't know, I think Bill's probably our longest-living veteran in the city of Murfreesboro. He actually participated in D-Day, and he had his 100th birthday, it was on May the 18th. So on behalf of y'all, we designated, because we couldn't see him on the 18th, this week as Bill Allen Week inside the city of Murfreesboro, and there's not a better testament to a Murfreesboroian than Bill Allen. Served on the Murfreesboro, served with the Murfreesboro Electric Department for over 30 years, served on the Parks and Recreation Commission and the Golf Commission. You will not find a better person than Bill Allen. So thank you for your service, Mr. Allen. I'm sure you're watching tonight. With that, we'll stand adjourned.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry.
All right, well, thank you, Shirley. All right, we'll move to Boarding Commission Appointments. Council, you've got a recommendation on the Pension Committee. Many years ago, we added employee representation to the Pension Committee. It's gone through the Police Department, was our first employee rep. Then it went to Fire, and Kathy Smith, Melissa's, Wright served. So this is the new appointment. Alan Bozeman now is being recommended to serve, and that's a recommendation from city employees. I think he's filling the term of Kathy Smith from purchasing who served, so.
Second.
Motion is second. And that was Sean, and
Thank you.
Heard again. Just making sure.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gills Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. And then you have lots of beer permits.
We do. We have two regular beer permits. One is for a new restaurant located at 206 North Thompson Lane. The other is for an ownership change of a restaurant located at 1006 Memorial Boulevard. And then we have four special event permits, all located at 405 South Manny for the Kinnearly Family History Group. The first event is scheduled for May 31st, and the remaining events are scheduled for June 28th, July 25th, and September 29th. All applicants submit our requirements, and we recommend approval pending final building codes inspections.
What's a special event beer permit cost? I knew I'd stump you.
I think it's $50.
$50? Okay.
And you could submit more than one event on the same application, so you don't have to pay for every event.
This is why I bring her with me.
I'll make a great tea.
I know, we do.
You really do.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gills Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Any statements to be paid?
No, sir.
Any other business from our staff members? Any other business from our council members?
I want to compliment our Parks and Rec group for the work they're doing and welcome all those people that have come in for Spring Fling. It's quite an awesome task that they perform every year. Is it 19, 19 years that we've done Spring Fling?
Yes, 2006. 2006. The contract is coming up, so it's almost 25 years.
Yeah, I think we've gotten some word about that, but I just, you know, didn't want to take this time to compliment them. They represent our city so well, and, you know, our police department's out there, you know, it's just a lot of good things happening that we represent our city extremely well during this, and a lot of people have an opportunity to see what a special place our community is because of Spring Fling. And all those that work and make it happen, and all those that attend, and all those athletes. It's really a good event for our community.
I guess, let's give one more round of applause to the staff and all the department heads. I mean, they've been working on this budget since January, and to come in, no tax increase, and be able to give the significant public safety raises and everything else. I mean, it's tremendous.
Well done.
So thank you. Well done.
Very good work.
Staff is great.
Staff is great.
Did you say who? He said Scott.
I thought you said Stephanie.
She's staff.
I want to close out and just say, I was just reminded about 30 minutes ago that there are things that you look at, you see that you, we all have different opinions on different things. We agree on different things, we disagree on different things. But one of the things that gives us the ability to have those rights for agreeing and disagreeing is that we're going to be celebrating Memorial Day on Monday, and we won't see our residents. And so we can agree on lots of things in our community and disagree. But if it were not for the people who represented this flag and represented us to be able, as a community, to be here, and those loved ones who have lost family members representing and fighting for this country, none of us would have the ability to be here. And so I want to say thank you to a lot of our police officers and our fire department and our city employees who are former veterans. We have council members who are former veterans, and I want to say thank you for your service and for giving all of us the ability to be able to be here today. So the citizens of Murfreesboro, thank you for what you do. And when you see these veterans or these families who've lost loved ones, give them a hug and say thank you.[1697.86]